All right. I'd like to call to order the Town of McCannlis Town Meeting for June 8, 2020. The invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Schwager.
Okay. Two years ago, our town took a stand by passing a resolution to value and protect quality, diversity, and inclusivity. May we remember this commitment today and always? Let us remember to also show kindness, patience to others, to speak up for those who can't, and to respect our differences, and seek and to live in peace. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
To the republic.
One nation.
One nation.
And justice for all.
Okay. All right. Announcements. We are very happy to welcome our newly appointed council member, Shelley Spahnhoes from Ward 2. We are...Hi, Shelley. Give a little wave. We are very happy to have you, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. A little update on the 2020 census. As of June 4, McCannlis had an 80.4% response rate. Now, that's a pretty strong response rate, and it ranks in the U.S. in the top 100 municipalities in PA. Okay? So we're in the top 100 for our response rate in PA. And we're in the top 1,200 in the county. Okay? So 1,000, top 1,200. That remaining 19.6% is very important. So we are encouraging everyone who has not filled out their censuses that information is on our website, and to please do that. And the reason is that the town benefits because of this information, how it's used. It helps determine our eligibility for grants and services, service costs, infrastructure upgrades, and other important programs over the next decade. Okay? Not just next year, but over the whole 10 years until the next census is taken. There is a direct relationship between federal resources invested in the community and census participation. You know, you always hear participate in the census, you know, it helps the community. It is about census participation. About $2,000 per person per year is given to the town. It also helps the town actually plan for its future so we know if we're growing, or if we're shrinking, or staying about the same where we are. Now, in 2010, our response rate was 82.3%. So we still missed that 18% and all the advantages associated with that. So we would really like to encourage everyone so that we can beat that 82.3% from 10 years ago. And so we really encourage everyone, please tell your friends, your neighbors in McCannlis to please fill out their censuses. It really does help the community. Number...some more...another announcement is that I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that the Allegheny Health Department Laboratory has confirmed a case of rabies in a raccoon that was brought to their facilities after it was reported near Pine Creek and Oak Ridge Drive. Okay? So if you see an animal acting unusual, please contact 911 Animal Control or the PA Gang Commission. All right? And under seminars and conferences, I wanted to let everyone know that there are some free webinars on the Allegheny County Conservancy website about stormwater. So they're free. So if anyone is interested in seeing those, please go to their website and participate in those. All right? Is there a motion to approve the minutes from May 11, the reconvened meeting on May 11, and the regular meeting on May 18?
So moved. Joanne Powers.
Okay. Thank you for saying your name, Joanne. Is there a second?
Second, Carolyn Schwager.
Were there any additions or changes that have not already been sent in and modified?
Madam President, I found a small error today that I just wanted to have changed. And the minutes from May 11, Jenna Parker, her name was misspelled. It should be Jenna. She was a...she made a comment on an agenda item.
What's the proper spelling?
J-E-N-N-A.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Any other corrections? Okay. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from these three meetings, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right. As...just in case someone doesn't know who is joining us on Zoom, that because of our Zoom meetings, they're a little different than our in-person meetings. So what we do, just because of the technology, is that we take all the comments for everything that's going to be discussed the whole evening, except the public hearing. That's the only thing that will be different right now. So if you have a comment, any...on any of the items coming up that you would like council to hear, please, RJ will let you unmute you and let you give that comment now.
Okay. And if anyone still wants to speak and has not signed up in the chat box yet, go ahead and type your name and address. Now, we've got...it looks like three signed up to speak this time. So the first is Rich Mangieri. Got two of you on here, so hopefully I'm unmuting the correct one.
Hello?
Let's see. I sent an unmute. There we go.
He's still muted.
I think I'm here. Can you hear me?
There you go. And Rich, before you start giving your comment, I just wanted to check because it looks like you also sent a second person's name and address in the chat box. Are they commenting from your account as well?
That is correct. And I was trying to get the technology set up. We have a special guest speaker here for you guys today.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pat Sekun. I live at 10359 Harmony Road in Wexford. And I put a little PowerPoint together. I wasn't sure if I could take the screen over and be able to do it, so we just did it this way. So what I'm going to be talking to you about is the water management for the basin, Wexford Run Creek Basin. It's located down by Eichner's Farm right here. Okay? And we're having an issue with a large amount of water going across our properties. The problem with this is there's five public rightways that go through this corridor, and they're fairly substantial rightways. We have Penn Power located up here, which is a substation. When it floods, you're unable to get to it. Penn Power also has a 36,000-volt line that runs through. It's a high-power line. Equitrans over here has a gas line, and it's actually a large gas line. Equitrans has a 700 PSI gas line with a substation located down on Harmony Road. And then the Sewer Authority, MTSA, they also have a sewer line that goes down the valley here. So this is the driveway in normal conditions and no flooding. This is actually after 3/4 of an inch of rain. This is what we're dealing with. Okay? Large amounts of water. When that water's going across there, you cannot drive across it. You don't know, you know, what kind of erosion is being, you know, occurring at the time. That means that the Equitrans can't get to their substation. That means that the police, the fire, any emergency, EMT, anything like that cannot get across there to get to the four houses that are on the other side. This is in normal conditions, and this was after 3/4 of an inch of rain on March 24. Massive. That right there is probably about 65 feet across. Penn Power is one of the people that loses access to their power lines. So during storms is when we have issues. Trees come down and power lines go down. Penn Power can't get to them. Okay? Penn Power also has a substation located on Richard Road across the street from us. That gets flooded out. They can't get to it. It's staged up high, but the access to it is down low, and it does take water. It's high voltage, 36,000 volts. These are the power lines that go through, and right here is the video that I showed you just earlier. Equitrans loses their access to their substation. These are...this is the substation. They have valves and stuff down there. They're down here three to four times every week. Not sure what they do, but they're doing something every day, it seems like, checking on things and everything. Like I said, this is 700 PSI 16-inch main that goes through McCannlis Township. So MTSA, McCannlis Township Sanitary Authority, they also have a sewer line that goes down through here, and some of the sewers, the actual manholes, get buried underwater. Now, these manholes don't have gaskets or seals or O-rings, so water's getting in. And worst-case scenario, water's migrating out. So this is the manhole that I just showed you back here. It's underwater, and it's located right there. Okay? And like I said, you know, none of our public services, you know, the ambulance, the police, the fire department, anything like that can get across to us whenever it rains. So in summary, we have some major issues that we need to address with this water. It's loss of access to Penn Power Substation, loss of access to 36,000-volt transfer line, loss of access to 700 PSI transfer gas line, loss of access to any public services, loss of access...and water migration possibly into McCannlis Township Sanitary Authority. And then there's four property owners. If they're home, they're staying, and if they're not, well, they ain't getting there until the water goes down. So I don't want to take any more of your time, but these are the points that I wanted to address. I think that they're pretty major, something to consider. If anybody would like this PowerPoint emailed to them, I'd be more than glad to do that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all the effort that you went to putting that together. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Rich, did you have a comment now that you wanted to make? Or is that all?
That was pretty much the comment.
Okay. Okay. Good.
My neighbor, who is also trapped down here with me, wanted to help because we just have a lot of concerns. So he was nice enough to put that together, and I thought it was worth listening to. So but that's all I had for today.
That was good. Thank you. We appreciate that. Visual aids are always, always good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
RJ, our next person?
Yep. We've got Brian Danley up next.
All right. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Yeah. It's tough to follow that up. That was great, guys. So I guess what I want to...and just for you guys' reference, I'm right up above that. So I'm between that power station that I mentioned that's somewhat elevated and the properties that they, you know, showed in that video. So I'm right in that same direct line of fire there as well. So but that was great, Pat. Thanks. I just wanted to give a quick update. Hopefully, I won't take up too much time as to what our, you know, our organization, McCannlis Families for Better Stormwater Management, what we've been working on. I think Angela and Shelley probably are fairly up to speed, but I want, you know, we want the rest of the town council members to know what's been going on. And by the way, welcome, Shelley. We look forward to working with you and hopefully, you know, helping come to a solution here for what Pat just showed you guys. But we met with Eddie Holmes, who, as you guys are probably familiar with now, they're the Wexford Station builder. We met with a representative from their site. You know, long story short, he...nice enough guy. You could tell he was trying to BS us. Eventually, by the end of the meeting, he admitted that a number of things there could have been done better. We sent a letter to Pine Township. Again, I think I sent that to Angela and Shelley, but, you know, with a list of requests per their...they asked us for this, a formal letter of request. So it includes some...it includes some information that we'd like on some ponds and locations and risers within the developments in the area, as well as instituting proper controls that should be in place, that aren't additional controls that would make a better steward of the land and a better neighbor, as well as remediation and restitution of personal property damage. So we're waiting to hear from that. We have a meeting with Senator Williams' office on Thursday. I think we're going to probably present that PowerPoint you guys just saw for her, as well as a number of other things. It was supposed to happen last week, but a couple postponed. Our call of the week for the McCannlis Families for Better Stormwater Management, that was to the ACCD last week. As usual, they're of no help and are, quite frankly, the epitome of government and oversight waste. They provided us with a...the Pine Township ordinance, stormwater ordinance, which we were able to just pick apart and show various places where their...Pine Township's not even meeting their own ordinance's requirements. So we're wait...again, that's something else we're going to talk to Williams' office about. You know, so that's kind of where we're at since the last meeting. I guess the only other thing, I think I maybe mentioned this at the last meeting, but we'd really like to hear something at one of the next few meetings, if you can, about where McCannlis stands in this regional approach, you know, that you guys have been working on with the other municipalities. I'd really like to hear, you know, where you guys think we're out with it and what we can expect and what we can hope for, you know, in both the short and long term. Because I'm getting answers from other municipalities that, you know, don't seem to line up with what I think McCannlis is working on. So that would be great at some point to hear an update on that. But besides that, that's kind of all I have today.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the update, Brian. The RJ, next person?
That's everyone.
Okay. All right. All right, then. We are going to move on to the public hearing on the ordinance reappropriating certain amounts of money within the general fund of the 2020 budget due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Trish Greathouse, do you want to go over any of that, or?
I just unmuted her. Trisha, let me know if you want me to turn your camera on or not.
I know those...all that stuff has been posted, and we went over it last meeting. Was there anything you needed to add? A couple of changes, maybe?
Sent her an unmute request.
Okay.
Not sure.
She looks like she's unmuted.
Yeah.
Fresh Greathouse?
Oh.
She's muted again.
You know, I'll jump in while RJ's working on that.
He's muted, RJ.
Yeah. I've turned her on and off. I mean, I've turned her mic on at least once. She...let me...I'll send her a text.
Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. The amendments are, by and large, those that we had presented to you at the meeting in May for your review. After doing a little bit more talking back and forth, there's just a few changes that we made, reducing some of the salt numbers, adjusting the public work salary slightly in the event that we can get any summer employees to help out in the parks, and just some adjusted to my T to give it some flexibility in the event that we try to undertake any public engagement efforts. So we just shifted a little bit of money between some different line items, but they...at the end of the day, the reduction...the total reduction stayed the same.
Okay. Hi, Trisha. There you are. Did you have anything you wanted to...did that...did you have anything you wanted to add? Did Bob?
No, I apologize. I've had trouble with my microphone.
Okay. So you're good with that explanation? Did Bob do a good job?
Yes, he did.
Even if I don't know numbers, right?
I'm happy to answer any other questions y'all have. We have the reductions for some of the economic factors, and then we cut some of the items that were new to the budget or new capital purchases.
Okay. Is there...are there any comments or questions from any council members about this resolution? Okay. So what we'll do now, then, if there aren't any, then RJ, is there anyone that would like to make any comments during this public hearing?
I don't have anyone additional signed up in the chat, but for any viewers right now, if you did want to make a comment specific to this ordinance, please type your name and address into the chat box.
Okay. I also want to say, while maybe someone is doing that, that we also allow, if you would like, for the next 10 days, or really would be just even fine until the Thursday before the next meeting, if you have a comment that you would like, you can send that to the council members, or you can send that to town administration, and that will make its way to us. So we try to add a little bit more time for comments so we can maybe catch some people who aren't watching this in real time, but will see it on Facebook or on their YouTube channel. So just know that if you're not here tonight and you have a comment, or you're here tonight and you think of one later, that you can still send that to us, and we'll consider all of those...council will consider all those comments. And then at the next meeting on the 22nd, if we don't want to make any changes in this, we'll vote on this and decide thumbs up or thumbs down. RJ, anyone show up?
Nothing additional.
Okay. All right. If there's no...if there's no comments or questions, then we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll move under...move on to reports from committees. Our finance chair is not here, so Trish, that will fall to you as the vice chair, if you don't mind going down through those, please.
Okay. So we have the report. We're going to review checklist number six dated May 1 through May 31, 2020, totaling $1,194,691.34, as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Okay.
Is there any questions?
All right. All right. Good. Next one?
No question. Okay. Number two, review the monthly financial summary and dashboard reports. This has been provided by Ms. Greathouse, if there's any questions.
Trish, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You've been supplied the report in your packets. We did see the dip in revenues start in May, as expected. We'll continue to monitor that. As such, because of the shutdown, some of our expenditures are also lower than expected. So for right now, I think that tonight's budget amendment plus continued monitoring of the financial situation is the best path forward.
Thank you. So with no further questions, we'll move on to number three, move to adopt ordinance number 1,500, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a cable franchise agreement negotiated by the North Hills Council of Governments, which renews the cable franchise agreement between the town and Comcast Cable Communication Management, LLC.
Is there a second?
Angela Woods, second.
Are there any questions about this, about this agreement, or any comments? Anything anyone's uncomfortable with? Or...madam president?
Well, go ahead, Trish.
I was just going to say this was discussed at length with the Planning Commission this week. I know a lot of our questions were answered. I'm not sure if there's any other questions from council at this time.
I just wanted to add, if I may, with the extended time provided for public comment following the public hearing in May, we did not receive any additional public comment. So I wanted to have that on our record.
Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in to clarify real quick. Sorry. We're looking at the cable franchise agreement right now, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to...since the planning commission was mentioned, I just wanted to differentiate that from the 5G draft ordinance.
Yeah, that's...
Because that's probably what you're thinking of.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second. If there aren't any more questions, we can vote. All those in favor of adopting this ordinance, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Number four, move to accept the resignation of Shelley Bonhoe, a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee, effective immediately.
Second, Carolyn Schwager.
All right. We, of course, are glad to lose her from this committee and welcome her onto council. So all those in favor of accepting her resignation, indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Shelley, you're off of the EAC. Well, you're still on the EAC. You're just in a different capacity. And Bob, can we get that out tomorrow to start advertising?
Ready to go.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Next is zoning committee. I'm not sure what you want there for zoning report.
That may have been added when I provided the memo to everyone. Bob, is that what we were thinking with that? Okay.
Okay. So we'll just skip that.
Unless anybody had questions.
Okay. Okay. The next one is move to take action on the preliminary and final subdivision application for the plan known as the Harnett Plan of Lots for Matt Harnett, located at 10021 Grubbs Road and 15 National Hayne Parcel Number ID, NOS 1072-P-103 and 1072-P-95, as per Services Number 9763, pages 1 and 2, prepared by Shell Engineering Incorporated, dated January 17, 2020, with the latest revision being April 24, 2020. Is there a second?
There'd be...it would be a motion to approve or deny.
Okay. Joanne?
Second.
Okay. So this was originally approved by council, and then Mr. Harnett wanted... So this was originally approved by council and then Mr. Harnett wanted to change the lot line and take out a piece of the property. And so this was already approved by planning and just the lot line was changed a little bit. So it had to be, go through the process again. So it didn't make it all the way to council, but that's what this is. Are there, are there any questions or do you need to go over this at all?
Madam President, if I could, I, I think to Bob, to Mr. Graham's point, you know, you read it as motion to take action. So we need to know whether your, the motion is to approve or deny the, the application.
So we, do we not want to take any questions about it or have someone explain it first?
We just need a motion first. The, the motion, it was, was written in such a way that needed to be modified to say move to approve or move to deny. Right now it just says, as written, move to take action. So there's not really a motion on the table.
Okay, so it's been, it was not written correctly then? Can we just change how we say it? Or?
Well, I mean, you just, I think, I think the way these have to be written is either to say move to approve slash deny, so that you know, you know, you have to pick one of those. That's another way of going about it. I think it's really just a matter of style. We just need to make sure that if it's a motion to approve this subdivision application, that that's, that's the way it's stated.
It, it was written that way because we didn't want to assume it would be approved or denied.
Okay. So we took a motion and we took a second.
But, but the, the motion that you read just says move to take action on.
Okay.
Right? So we need, we need the motion to say move to approve or move to deny.
You're asking Kim to restate the motion one way or the other, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so how about we say move to approve the preliminary? Is that what you want to say?
That would be great.
Okay, so.
And I'm sure Mr., I'm sure Mr. Hart, I would prefer that to the alternative.
Okay, all right, it seems like, okay. All right. All right, so we'll never write it like that again, please. Move to approve on the preliminary. Do I need to read the, all the rest of that again as opposed to move to take action? Is that all right?
You don't need to reread everything else.
Thanks. All right.
Joanne Power, second.
Okay, Joanne Power. Okay, all right. So now are there any questions? Or comments or do we? That was the explanation of what it is.
Yeah, yeah, I just, if we need Mr. Harnett to jump on, he's also on the line. If there are any questions directly towards him. Just to reiterate, this, this had made it, it was going to be on the agenda for council because it was originally approved by the planning commission. Mr. Harnett requested at that stage to remove one of the lots because he would have had to take down a shed that had been existing as a non-conforming structure on that front lot. And if it had been combined to, you know, be included in this, this parcel consolidation, he would have potentially had to take that down. So he went back to the planning commission, basically the same plan, just removing the front lot. They approved it again, and so it has made it to your agenda. And I can, like I said, if, if anyone has direct questions for Mr. Harnett, just let me know and I'll, I'll turn his microphone on.
Are there any questions at all? Okay. Hearing none, can we vote now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of approving the preliminary and final subdivision, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? Motion carries. The next two items are discussion items, so we won't necessarily be taking action on them. Or if, if council choose to, I guess maybe we could. The first one is discussion on an ordinance to amend the definition of the distribution antenna system, which is DHS and the stealth technology to add definitions from minimal functional height, small wireless communications facility, micro wireless communications facility, and to amend and add provisions regarding retention of experts and to establish conditions for small wireless communications facilities, including regulations to time of review, fees, design, sitting and abandonment. So RJ, you want to tell everybody a little about this?
So this, this ordinance draft has been in the works for a little bit. I believe Gavin, you might remember the particular meeting in which the pending ordinance resolution was adopted regarding a previous version of this draft ordinance. So the, the short version is this, this is basically to update our regulations so that it's accommodating and in line with the FCC's requirements for how 5G cell towers are regulated. Essentially, the municipalities can set some, as they call them, objective design standards for, for what types of towers can be installed and where. But we do need to have a particular definition on the books that is in line with the FCC. We do need to have a permitting process. So this has come up through the planning commission in a couple discussion meetings. We reviewed and council has also been provided with some just diagrams, some simple image representations about what different stealth technology, as they call them, which just means poles that are not extremely obtuse in the environment, but what, what they could look like in a couple of different streets in McCandless. You have in your packet a brief PowerPoint that was prepared together with, with Gateway Engineers. Just, you know, sort of, if, if you were looking on a residential street that, let's say, has utilities already underground, but they still need to locate a tower there. You know, what, what might that look like? Could you go with more of sort of a decorative street light style instead of just a plain pole? Or what might they look like on top of existing telephone poles on more commercial streets? Those are the sort of things that we're able to regulate at this level. So that document discusses that, the application process or the different performance standards they have to provide with technical documentation. Anything else Gavin?
No, you did a really good job of summarizing that, RJ.
After the last couple of meetings, I better know.
Right, after, after three or four hours of discussion, dude, I think a lot of that sunk in. I, I would, I would just mention too, that the town has existing regulations regarding cell towers themselves, sort of your classic, you know, standalone cell tower, non-5G, and, and those are not being amended. You know, those are approved outside the right of way by special exception and inside of the right of way pursuant to other existing regulations. So we're not messing with that, but we did, we did get some really good comments from the planning commission and, and went back and sort of took another run through a second time. My colleague Chris Foltz prepared the drafts. He's very in tune with the, with the latest and greatest of the FCC. So I think the end result, particularly, you know, we beefed up, as you said, RJ, the application requirements, making it very clear as to exactly what people need to submit at the time of the application. And, and most importantly, I think is that, as you said also, this, this is bringing us into compliance with the current FCC regulations. So yeah, I think, I think it was, a lot of people put a lot of work into it and I think it's pretty good.
And one more note, I wanted to make more for sort of council's administrative consideration. If or when this ordinance is adopted, we will need to just do a small update to our fee schedule because the way that it's written right now doesn't really account for the full design standard review process and, you know, any consultant fees for engineers and things like that. So that's something that we will want to take a look at, but we don't have to address right now a time of passage. Or well, time of, you know, we're not passing the night, but you know what I mean.
Yeah.
Right, so council's options, you know, if, if you are comfortable with this, the process would be that the council would, you know, essentially advise RJ to move this forward to a public hearing that would occur, you know, roughly in about 45 days to 60 days. It would go back to the planning commission for one last review and comment session. And then the county planning department also gets a chance to review and comment prior to that public hearing. You know, council holds a public hearing and then after that public hearing, you would be able to adopt the zoning amendment.
Are there any, any questions from council? It's quite a process.
So is anyone going to be, like, are, is there any requirements about contacting the homeowners that could potentially have this post put out from their home? Is there anything that they will, like, alert them to so they're aware of it beforehand?
There's no specific notice obligation like that. You know, we are somewhat limited in the regulations and the requirements we can put on these providers. And that's a big part of, a big part of our goal here, because a lot of this is regulated by, at the federal level by the FCC, is to sort of take it as close to the line as we could to regulate everything that we can, but, but not go beyond there so that we're not subject to challenge, like we do on a lot of these sort of zoning amendments where there's other, you know, regulations in play. So I, offhand, RJ, I don't recall any specific note, you know, property owner notification requirements. It's a, it's a 23-page ordinance, so we could take a quick, to a quick look, but do you remember offhand?
I, I don't recall seeing that offhand. I, I do know that at the very least, the, the installers, the applicants have to provide pretty extensive documentation as to why they had to choose that spot and why essentially they couldn't locate it in any other place, whether it's on an existing pole or if they couldn't have. But they, and they do also have to put it in line with the property line. So essentially, nobody should end up with one of these dropped in front of their front door unless their front door happens to be on their, their parcel line, which I'm pretty sure we don't have anything that's that non-conforming. Beyond that, we're kind of limited in, in where we can regulate them.
And then that's a great point that you make. One of the goals here too is, as you said, to, to place it in areas that it's going to be least impactful. So we require sort of a study to be done and to say, all right, well, you're saying you need to put this new little pole here, but, but show us why you can't place it on something that's already existing. So we, there's a lot of hoops that we, we'd be making the applicants jump through to, to attempt to make it as, as minimum impact to our residents as possible.
Another quick question. So if we, so, cause I know the one image has the pretty light post out front. So you're saying the homes that have existing power lines above grounds can't have that? Well, you know what, that, that wasn't something that, that had come up specifically in the discussions. Though I think the hope is that for the, the neighborhoods or the streets that do have existing power lines already, they should possibly be able to just pop one of those boxes on top of the pole. So that way they're not, you know, digging up any more utilities unnecessarily. However, that's certainly something we can talk about with the design standards document. Which again, that's, that's a separate administrative functional document. So that can sort of be, you know, what, what I might call a living document that could be updated as industry standards change.
Right, I know RJ did speak to, you know, one of the vendors to sort of get a better idea as to what these folks, you know, need to do, what, what it needs to look like for practical purposes. And then as RJ said, the, the ordinance allows for the, the town to sort of develop, develop design standards going forward as, as we, you know, sort of see how this works in practice.
So Gavin, are you saying that the town would have a choice of the type of pole that, that would be used?
To some extent.
Okay, well, what I'm looking at is that picture they have of the wooden pole that I personally don't think it looks very attractive. And then what happens when that wooden pole starts deteriorating?
Right, I mean, I think. If you're referring to the one, the, the figure two in the upper right corner, I think the idea there as an existing utility pole would be, look, you know, it, these utility poles, I mean, they would, they would need, need the same amount of maintenance as any other utility pole. But the thought is, well, if you can just sort of pop something on the top of an existing utility pole, it may not even really be noticed, or at the very least, it's going to have the least amount of impact as opposed to, you know, you know, constructing a new pole or some other new facility.
Yeah, and, and if you go to in the PowerPoint, if you're able to look at that and that came from Gateway as well. Now, that's a separate document from the ordinance, but it should have been part of your packet. If you look at the, the one photo of Angamar area going towards Coons, I think I got that all right. Hopefully I'm learning my town geography by now. But you, you can, you can see that the slide shows, you know, one of the standard tele, wooden telephone poles existing down there and then what it would look like with one of these structures on top. So those design standards are assuming that you're just, what we call in this co-locating a, a box on an existing utility pole.
Okay, and so as we're looking at that, those pictures from Gateway, what are your thoughts on all those gazillion lines that are there?
Well, those are, those are the existing power lines that are already there.
Well, maybe, maybe when they're, when you're right there, maybe they're not as visible as they are in this picture because as I looked at it, I, I, I was just kind of appalled with all the lines that were there.
Yeah, that, that is, that is what it looks like when you're driving by now. These don't really add any lines as far as I know.
Well, I'm going to have to take a special trip over there because I never noticed this before. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, are there any other questions that we have? You, this is not your last chance at questions. You'll, it's a very lengthy document. You probably have to read through it a couple of times. I know getting through it was a little bit tough, but you'll have more opportunity for questions. So this is not your last chance. Okay, if you're ready, we can move on for our next discussion, which is to discuss an ordinance to amend part 13, title three of the zoning code to further regulate the keeping of household pets and chickens and adding associated definitions. Thank you for not naming them all. So we have had, I've had, and I know other people have had, a lot of people saying that they're interested in keeping chickens. And we really didn't have any specifications for that. We didn't make any provisions for that. So that's what a large part of this ordinance is, is about. We looked up all the ways to keep healthy chickens and tried to incorporate that, how much room they need to run, what, you know, how big their coop needs to be, how far from the property line, those kinds of things. So a lot of work went into this to make it really, so the chickens can have a high standard of living like the people who live in McCandless. And, and then of course, there are also some additional definitions in that for, I think we added some to kennel and to rescue and to fostering also. So. Did I miss anything, RJ?
Covered it pretty well. I, I make a comment that the safety regulations for the chickens are very robust. They will be some healthy comfy chickens. I might have to stop by one of those hoops if we have a really late meeting, I'll take a nap.
It's almost a tiny house, really. It's very nice. So does anyone have questions about this or? Comments?
Madam President, do you want to bring up the, the household pets aspect of this ordinance as well?
Okay, should we just do it separate? Should we just say, is everybody good with the chickens? And then we can move on to, so we don't get like whiplash?
Sure, sure, that's no problem.
All right, everybody good with the chickens? Anybody have any comments or changes that they want about chickens? Oh, good, okay.
Trish Clunin, I actually have one question and I've seen this in other communities too. I always appreciate fresh eggs. And if my neighbor handed me a dozen fresh eggs, I'd be very happy about it. But I've also seen folks kind of putting up signs saying, we have fresh eggs. Will there be any specific limits to commerce or selling and buying of the products of these chickens?
The ordinance clearly says that you cannot sell eggs or manure, period.
Okay.
So they can give you, your neighbor can give you eggs. I have to send them to you.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Okay, all right. To the household pet portion.
Did you want us to just discuss or you want me to, to elaborate a little bit on?
You can elaborate, go ahead.
Sure, so this overall discussion was, was, and I may have to pull Gavin in for the lawyer's speaker. Sure, so uh thi- this overall discussion was was uh, and I may have to pull Gavin in for the lawyer speaker. But we essentially discussed, you know, sort of regulating the health and safety of the quantity of household pets that would be, as the ordinance says, customarily incidental to a residential use. Now, that's differentiating it from, say, a commercial kennel or a state licensed rescue network facility that might have a larger number of household pets, say, dogs in the particular case of a kennel. Then you would necessarily commonly find one, you know, pet owner sort of, sort of having custody of in a situation that that didn't have animals coming in or out over time. We also wanted to make sure that we differentiated that from fostering a pet, which is something that folks often do when they're either helping, you know, an individual rescue animal become socialized to be around other other household pets. Or sometimes people foster um an animal to see if it's a good fit in their home. So we didn't want to exclude that. We made sure to make clear that the rescue network facilities and kennels were sort of the state licensed size and type that they would need to to get an occupancy permit, have that license on file with the town. Gavin, do you want to chime in at all?
I mean, I guess, you know, the one of the things that had been discussed, and first of all, let me, let's, we could all say thanks to the Animal Subcommittee Group that met quite a few times to really kind of, you know, press through these regulations and and gave a lot of good feedback and a lot of differing opinions. But at the end, it was a, it was a nearly unanimous recommendation of this version of the ordinance. And then the Planning Commission also chewed on it quite a bit, too. So, uh, you know, one of the things that a lot of people have been asking is, you know, why can't we just pick a number for when it comes to how many dogs you're allowed to have? And that's, that's something that was, you know, we discussed for those folks, those council members and those members of the public who have been attending meetings, this is something that came up month after month. There were some particular problem areas where excessive animals were causing problems for neighbors. We recommended, based on the case law that's out there, that picking a number is not the way to go. We think that that's difficult to defend. It's difficult to enforce. Those numbers have been found by some courts to be arbitrary. You know, different sized dogs, different, different types of properties. Just one number is not, one size does not necessarily fit all. So what we did from that perspective was to look at the case law. And there's a fairly recent case that found that by by defining it as the number of pets that would be customarily incidental to a residential home, you're essentially allowing, you know, some level of discretion by the town. And essentially sort of would limit the enforcement of this to a situation where the 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 home has really become more of a kennel, more of an annual rescue. Um, and the and the actual home itself is sort of almost secondary. You know, it's essentially that many animals that have have sort of changed the whole purpose and impact of that particular property. So that's why we went with customarily incidental. We think that's a defensible, that's defensible language. And again, as RJ said, that would apply to, you know, those folks just keeping their regular household pets as well as that same standard would apply to those folks who are fostering animals on, you know, on some, on a somewhat limited basis. And and we did not have, although we identified kennel previously and placed it, had it permitted in the C3 zoning district, we did not have a definition of it. So we added, we added a good definition of that, animal rescue, and then we clarified what what it means to foster. So we think it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive way. It's an, we think it's an enforceable way. And I would just remind, uh, you know, council members and the public that that when it comes to impacts of of animals, regardless of the number of animals being kept, if it's, you know, animals getting off leash, if it's animals, you know, causing property damage, anything like that, there are separate regulations um on the books of McCandless that that would allow those folks to be recorded, and code enforcement and or the police would be able to to cite those those people, those individuals, if they're not taking care of their pets. And we also, you know, had a, had great concerns, and the committee had great concerns about the well-being of the animals themselves. And this, the intent of this is also to ensure that that well-being is maintained, including a sort of a beefed up reporting requirement that if there is a suspected animal cruelty, that the zoning administrator would be required to report that to the humane, the humane officer of the county.
Good summary, Gavin, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other, any, any questions or comments from council?
Um, I know I'm looking at the notes and I'm just thinking that to me, I think a $50 renewal fee for the chickens, um, that seems pretty excessive. To be honest, I don't even like the $100 fee that they have to pay. Just looking at our time, what's going on right now, the pandemic and the cost of eggs, I don't know, I think that's a little out there. That's my opinion.
We were, we were just trying to get back the money that it was, that that fee came from, what it was going to cost our town to process the application, to come out and inspect the coop, and um to just approve the whole application. So that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to break even on the added expense to the town. That was the rationale for that. We can certainly certainly set it whatever we want, but that's what we're thinking.
I just feel. I will say that renewal is a very common practice with these urban chicken permits now.
I know, but guys, the times have changed right now, we're in a pandemic, and there's people who can't afford to do this. So I'm going to keep saying, I don't agree with this. Not for chickens, no, not for people who are trying to feed their families, no. That's just what I feel.
Are there any other comments? Okay, Gavin, for moving this forward, what would we need to do?
Same exact process as the other ordinance. So and and I guess I should ask, when we finish up that last discussion, my assumption was, based on the conversation, that we were going to move the the distributed antenna system ordinance forward. And it sounds like we're in that same position with this ordinance unless council feels otherwise.
That's how it seems to me. Is that kind of what I'm getting nods from people? Good. I I would like on the last one, I did forget to say, when that finally makes its way back to council, RJ, can you kind of put together your idea on what is scheduled, what the schedule fee would be for that? So we can kind of do it all together?
Oh, for the, yeah, so so both the 5G and the chicken permit is recommended would would need updates. So I can, I can draft that, yeah.
Just so when they come back to us for the final approval, we can just kind of do it all at once, so we're done?
Sure.
If that would be okay? Okay, all right, so are we, we done with this? We? Okay, all right. Carolyn, public safety?
Okay, we have the chief's report, is Ryan on? Let me unmute him, I believe he's still here.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, everyone.
Does anyone have comments for Ryan?
You all have my report, is there any questions on it?
No.
Nope, none for me.
Okay, good, guess that's it.
Okay. Angela, public works?
The, the report was included in your packets. If there's any questions, I think that Mr. Sabana is on here. Okay, if there's no questions, I'll move on to the next item, which is a move to award a contract to Allegheny Mineral Corporation for various sizes of construction limestone and riprap stone material under the Pennsylvania Co-Stars Pricing System, contract number 5610-15.
Is there a second?
Second, Joanne Powers.
Are there any questions or comments? Well, when, the last time that I looked at mine, it didn't have any like final totals of costs. Was that just mine, the mineral overview and agreement?
I'm just losing track here with all of them.
It says zero at the bottom, do we get all this free?
Good work. Can you hop on, are they giving this chance?
Let on that real quickly, the the prices change almost monthly. They, the quantities vary from month to month and over the year, depending on the amount of work that we're involved in that that we need to use stone on. So the the prices that come in every month are the prices that they're charging us for that particular month. That's regulated by PennDOT and by Co-Stars. So we really have no control over the prices. Usually, over the course of a year, they don't change by much more than 10 or 20 cents a ton, up or down. For instance, last month, they were down because fuel prices were really down. I would expect next month, they're probably going to go up again. So we don't actually bid for a total amount of stone that's that's going to be used every year. We ask them for the prices and the budget item for that is built into the drainage portion of the budget.
Are there any other questions or comments? A motion and a second?
Yes, I moved and Joanne's second.
Right, so all those in favor of awarding the contract, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
The last item is I move to award the option year two articles of agreement with Morton Salt Incorporated for 2020-21, as received by the North Hills Council of Governments, with the bid price being $69.36 per ton delivered.
Is there a second?
Second, Carolyn Twiger.
Okay. Are there any comments or any questions? This is a way that we save some money on the budget amendment is we lowered the amount of salt. We've needed a lot less salt the last couple of years. And so we lowered the salt that we were purchasing this. So this is one way that we saved some money. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all, we've motioned a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Services Committee, Shelley.
Thank you. Number one, the Fire Marshal's report for the month of April 2020 and the permit report for May of 2020 was in all the council packets. Are there any questions or comments? I believe that our marshal's stack is out there. I see his name.
I am here. Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Dan.
Hello, how you doing?
Hi.
Dan, when are we going to start um doing inspections? Again, what kind of timetable do you have on that?
We're starting this month.
Okay, okay, because it said it was.
It's written in.
Said suspended indefinitely, so I wasn't sure.
But that was, that was, you're looking at April, the report is in April, if you recall. At the opening, or the, with the town manager, our opening reopening plan, we're going to start uh this month. Yeah, as soon as we went green, we're going to start our inspection program back up.
Right, great, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll move on. Number two, code enforcement's violation complaint statistics report for the month of May 2020. Any questions or comments?
Oh, no.
All right. Moving on, number three. This is to move to adopt ordinance number 1501, an ordinance approving revisions to the July 25, 1977 Northland Public Library Intergovernmental Agreement between the Township of Ross, the Town of McCandless, the Borough of Franklin Park, and the Township of Marshall and the Borough of Bradford Woods. Any comments or questions?
All right, there's a motion, is there a second?
Angela Woods.
Second.
Okay, everybody supports elaborate. Okay, I think Angela might have squeaked in there first, so I put her down as the second. Okay.
Okay.
All right, are any comments or questions at this time? Okay, hearing none, all those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Recreation Committee, Trish.
Recreation, we did have a meeting on the Fitness Court this week. Bob, did you want to relay that or I could share?
You did an excellent job of keeping the notes. Let me, I'll just throw out a couple of things. We did have a very good meeting with UPMC and the people at NFC. Work is underway on the Fitness Court. If you drive past on Ingamar Road, it's definitely going to stand out with the UPMC purple there. And um the anticipation is that there will be a soft opening of the facility in mid-July. And we're working the details out with UPMC and their media people in terms of just how much publicity and what kind of event we'll have.
Thanks, and I was very excited to hear it seems like the Fitness Court sponsors and they're all working to make this a very user-friendly facility for the residents of McCandless, including access to an app and some training and resources for us to get this open. So it's very, I'm very excited about this.
I think, I think we are, it's going to be a nice addition to our community. Anything else from Recreation?
That is all today.
Okay, all right. We don't really do unfinished business, we'll skip under that, we'll skip over that. Is there a motion to appoint a member to the EAC?
I move to appoint Jeff Johnstone to the EAC Committee. Joanne Powers, sorry.
Okay, okay. So, Bob? Okay, so, so, um, we, well, let me tell you what the ordinance says, and let's talk about, let's talk about that. So um, we have tied our hands a little bit with two committees by saying that those committees mo- will be selected by ward. And since this is a ward seven position, we have one applicant from Ward Seven. So we have, we, we made provisions, we made provisions to have someone fill a different ward position if no one applied for that position. So I'd like to hear from Gavin on this. Gavin, can we appoint? That's what, that's what the ordinance says. What, 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 what say ye?
Well, I mean, is it an ordinance or is our, is our appointment policy by resolution first? That's my first question.
I think, no, it's resolution, it's resolution.
Okay, so I mean, I would say that you know, you have the ability to change your appointment procedure, but you, you basically would have to agree to modify your policy for this purpose. So, you know, you can, you can amend your appointment policy. It's, it's in by resolution, you can amend it. You know, technically, you're supposed to amend it by written, written resolution. But in this particular case, you know, you can make a motion to modify the appointment policy under and and add whatever new terms you feel are appropriate if you feel like a change is in order. Obviously, the one option is to follow your policy, but if you feel like it's not appropriate in this case, you would have to, you know, modify your policy to allow. And and under, under what circumstances do you want to make that allowance? I don't know if you, if if anyone has thought that through, or if it's just you want to totally eliminate the requirement of doing it by ward. That's something that council could do as well.
Date it to eliminate that by ward?
Yeah, I would like to make all those position, we have, we've kind of blocked ourselves in doing it this way as well as on the Activities Committee. it this way as well as on the Activities Committee. Could we just strike that stipulation? Or do we need to say move to modify EAC appointment policy to make all positions at large? How would we say that?
Can I, can I suggest unless, unless you feel like you need to make this appointment this evening, you know, would it, would it make sense to have me go back and work on a modified appointment policy that council could then consider and adopt at the next meeting and then thereafter make the appointment in compliance with the new policy?
Oh, I like that. What do you all think?
Yeah, Madam President. I like that as well.
That works.
I like that. I approve.
Give me some nods, because the voices kind of ran together. Okay, good. Terrific.
All right. I'll work with the town administration then, and we'll come up with a new draft for council's consideration.
Okay, so we still do have this motion on the table. Okay, so if there, I'm going to call for a second, but if you don't second it, then the motion dies, and then we can come back and do it later, right Gavin?
Or Ms. Powers could just withdraw her motion.
Okay, all right.
I withdraw, Joanne Powers, I withdraw the motion.
All right. Okay, all right. So that should have that taken care of, and we'll look for that for you. Gavin, will you please look at the Activities Committee also?
Yes.
And see if we can make those at large. I really think we've boxed ourselves in too much. You know, certain wards have, it seems like more people who volunteer and other wards have less, and, you know, I think we should have those options.
So that's EAC and AAC, both would be completely at large.
Right, and those are the only ones, and correct me if I'm wrong, everyone, but those are the only two that I can think of that are ward-specific. Am I correct on that?
What about the technology? Is that not?
It is not. They only have five people. Technology Committee's only five, anyway. Yeah, okay. All right, just if you don't mind Gavin looking at those two, please, and just make sure something's not somewhere else in there. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so let's move past that. Is there any old business?
Madam President, did we mean to appoint someone to the Technology Advisory Committee this evening?
We have one more person to interview, Angela.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll get the, we'll get the last person at the next meeting, and then we'll be able to do that.
Thank you very much.
Certainly. Okay, all right. Any old business? Anyone?
Well, can we, we've been talking about adding Ryan's interview. Can we add that on to next meeting too?
I spoke with Acting Chief Hawk, and he had said that he wanted to wait and to be interviewed in person, that he did not want to be interviewed by Zoom. If he's changed his opinion on that, I'd be glad to move forward with that, but that was his own preference.
Okay, well, Ryan's not, oh, yeah, he is on.
He's still here.
Okay.
It might be good to have him.
Yeah, weigh in.
But that's why we've been waiting, because we keep thinking we're going to be, you know. Yeah, we thought that we'd be in person sooner than we will be.
In two weeks, yeah. Ryan?
Yes, ma'am. I would, whatever, I would say whatever council feels is most appropriate. I'm good either way. I'm in no rush, and I can do it Zoom or in person.
Okay, okay.
I'm kind of noncommittal there. I'm good either way.
Okay, all right, all right. I'm perfectly fine. That would be an executive session, right? So that interview would be executive session. So as of right now, we have one technology interview, so we could add him. Bob?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm nodding and not speaking out loud.
Making sure. What time is the technology? Has that been scheduled?
Do we have it set for 6:30?
We have it set for 6:30.
Yeah, we could, we could do that interview at 6:30 and then go into executive session.
Okay, okay, all right. Is that okay with you, Ryan?
Yes, ma'am, that works for me.
Okay, all right. All right, so that'll be our plan on the 22nd. We'll do one little interview, and then we'll do.
One big interview.
One big interview, that's exactly right. All right, good. All right, excellent.
Thank you, folks.
Sure, okay. Any other old business? Okay, new business. Discuss the proposal to establish a McCandless Award of Recognition. You know, we have kind of given out some of these awards, and it's kind of been as a council member kind of notices somebody or, but that's what it's been. If a council person says this is a great person, we should nominate them. I thought it would be nice to make a formal policy and allow citizens in the community also to participate, and, because we certainly don't know all the great things that are happening in our community. And so what this would do is it still allows council to nominate members of the community that they think, as well as council would be the, would vote on whether to recognize this person or not, and, but it opens it up for citizens to do it too. Is there questions or comments or areas we need to improve on this, or what do you think about it? You want to do something like this? What?
Madam President, this sounds like a nice thing that we could add to the, like, the website, a way to do this online real easy for citizens to do.
I think, I think that's a great, a great way. We can always have a backup form for, for the non-tech people, you know, to come by the town when the town opens. But yeah, I think that would be a great way to do it. Maybe put it under the how-to part on the website, so how, you know, the how to do this, how to do that. Any other comments or?
Madam President?
Yes?
Did you, did you have any thought in, unless I missed it, that about how many of these? Is this a one, one person group or a year, or anybody, anytime? Or did you have a thought in mind that we could give out, say, 20 of these?
Anybody, anytime. I don't know that there would be, we'd have to see what the occasions were, but council decides if we think it is worth the recognition, you know. So we would make that decision, but I, I think recognizing as many people as are doing fabulous things in the town would be kind of a refreshingly positive thing. So I was not going to limit it at all.
So are you thinking, because it could become pretty, I mean, if we get a bunch of submittals, could we do something that's just more of like an online acknowledgement where we post, let's say, a picture or maybe, I don't know, the act of them like cleaning up the side of the road or something, where that could be where they're recognized online, like Facebook and our webpage?
The, the proposal suggests a gallery that would be online, where once a person received award, that they would be kind of recognized on there. We could, I would be surprised if we were inundated with, you know, thousands of these or hundreds of these or even a dozen of these. And we could always change it to say, oh, one a month if we had too many. But, you know, one a month is, oh, now there's a deadline, you know, we talked about, Trish helped put this together. Thank you, Trish. We kind of worked on this, and we just kind of, we're thinking, just let it, you know, free flow, and if it gets to be too much, we could dial it back. I mean, if you, if you guys feel like we need to say once, one a month, or I don't want to do one a year, you know, I'd like to do, I'd like to do, I'd like to do a lot of them, you know? I hope we got a lot of people that nominate and, you know. Are you all wanting to limit them? I mean, talk to me. Let's decide what we want to do.
This is Trish Clunin, and I, I would hope that having so many wonderful people that we need to make room for them isn't really our problem, because we do have that many people. We just need, you know, right now, they're not getting recognized, and I think we may have a situation where we have more than we want to handle in a meeting time or a timeframe, but one thought I had with this is the more people we can get to just know that the council is meeting, to know that the council is taking on more than, you know, I found that a lot of times people only know about our council when there's a problem, and I'd rather have it go in the opposite direction.
Exactly. And if you recognize Sally, all of Sally's friends and family are going to be tuning in, and I think that does bring people forward to what's, what's happening and to see where our meetings are and to maybe hear something they didn't know and maybe be interested. So do you, so do you guys want to move forward with this then, or what, or make some changes? What do you want to do?
Madam President, I think it's a nice idea. I think leaving it open-ended is, is fine for the time being. As you mentioned, we could always tweak that later if we need to.
We can always, we can always change that. Okay, so you want to put it on next week for a vote then? Is that okay? So everybody can kind of look over it and chew on it a little bit, and, and maybe we'll get some public comments about this mail to us. Maybe somebody else has a good idea, too. What do you think? Like it? Also, next order of business is, you know, some, some towns are starting to open up and have some in-person meetings, and Bob had suggested that we go through the end of July with our Zoom meetings. I wanted to just kind of hear what council thought about that. I mean, I am completely fine with doing what we're doing, but I did want everybody to be able to weigh in and say what you thought and what you wanted to do. So please, I'd like to hear from you.
Madam President, I have a question about that. Two of the things that we discussed tonight will go to a public hearing. Will that be within the timeframe? As in, I would prefer the public hearing was in person.
The public hearing is going to be next week, right Gavin?
Well, we have, we have a number of public hearings. I'm not sure which.
I apologize. I'm referring to the, the two about the, the five.
Amendment?
And the, yeah, and the Anna Ordinance.
Right, so I would foresee those probably as August hearings right now, and I guess, you know, I don't think the council has to commit at this point as to whether you want to be in person for those or not. I, I tend to agree that, you know, if there's going to be meetings that are going to bring more people out, it's probably easier to manage, you know, when we're doing it in person. Just so council's aware, I mean, the governor extended his declaration of emergency, as many of you may be aware, on June 5th for another 90 days, which obviously takes us through, you know, into early September. I am seeing, you know, a lot of our municipal clients now aiming for the July time period to try to think about in person, but obviously, it's, it's not one size fits all. And I would mention too, we do have a, there's going to be a liquor license hearing scheduled for the next council meeting, and we would anticipate, as of now at least, unless council tells us otherwise, that that would be handled by way of Zoom.
I mean, I know I talked to Joe Lastovic from Ross, and they're waiting till the end of August to go back to actually being in person publicly. So all their meetings will be via Zoom till the end of August.
The issue that you're, the issue you're going to face isn't so much reconvening as the council, I believe, as much as it is trying to adhere to the social distancing recommendations for the public to attend. We're not going to have very many seats for the public at the end of the night.
So you're saying more people could attend on Zoom than they could in person?
I, I think that there's some potential ways that we can look at opening the building up for the public, but still do the majority of the meeting or do the meeting through electronic means. I have some thoughts, I haven't really materialized, but we, Angela and I talked with the Technology Committee about some of this at their meeting, and I'd like to kind of pick their brain a little bit more, because there is technology we would need to purchase if we're going to try to do any kind of a hybrid system. You know, my personal feeling, though, if, when you're ready to go in person, I'm fine with that. The, the concern that I have is for those people who are less comfortable with the idea of being less than potentially six feet away from somebody else.
My concern is that there's going to be some people who fall into both categories that are not great with technology or don't have access to it at home, and who may be the same people who shouldn't be in a public gathering situation where they, where they can't distance properly. But I want to make sure that even those people have opportunity to weigh in, you know, on these topics.
How, and what are your ideas on that?
Well, as Bob mentioned, the Technology Advisory Committee had talked a little bit about setting up something at Town Hall perhaps, where, you know, we could all still dial in from home, but maybe like a library sort of situation where you, there are different stands for computers, so people could log into the Zoom meeting from Town Hall if they didn't have that technology available at home. And I don't know what the reopening for the library looks like, but that might be somewhere where people could access that, that sort of technology as well. Nothing's concrete, of course, like, these are just ideas that we're trying to flesh out of what it could look like, but, but some ideas for kind of getting back to meeting in person, and it's all called hybrid, where maybe some of it's virtual and some of it's in person, and it's a lot to think about. But I just want to make sure, a couple of these, I think that, I think there are going to be a lot of people who want to weigh in, and I want to make sure we don't exclude anyone, the ability to, to be heard during that time.
Right, we absolutely want to be as inclusive as possible, of course.
This is Trish.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is Trish Clunin. I was just going to say, is it possible, I love that we're allowing an extended time period for public comment that goes beyond just being live on the Zoom right now. Could that be possibly part of the hybrid that folks have a couple of days to officially make comments?
We've been giving everybody 10 days of the public hearing afterwards.
And continue that.
Right, yeah, yeah, and I think we would. I mean, I know we would. There's, there's no reason not to. In fact, honestly, there's no reason not to continue that practice even when we meet, start meeting in person. I mean, I think that's a good practice for people who aren't at the meetings. They can, we can still take their comments. Maybe they'll see it on Facebook, maybe they'll see it on the YouTube channel, and we can still take their comments. Everybody can't come to the meetings, everybody can't make Zoom. I'd like that to be a permanent practice that we make. Let people make comments for 10 days after a public hearing. Is there a rule Gavin, that they can only make comments at the public hearing?
Well, yeah, there generally is that rule. However, during the emergency declaration, one of the governor's Act 15 regulations specifically allows for that type of written comment to be submitted outside of the public hearing itself. Now, when you go back to sort of the normal situation, whatever you want to call it, you know, the, the problem with allowing it, and again, I don't want to just foreclose it, there may be a way to do it, just, but one of the things that jumps out at me is if you have the, you know, the applicant only gets a certain period of time at the public hearing to present their case, and those who are for it and against it have to do that at the public hearing. So if someone would raise an issue outside of that without the applicant having an opportunity to address that during the public hearing, it could be potentially problematic. And whenever, whenever you're doing these public hearings, you're creating a record so that, you know, the judge, who ultimately, if there is an appeal, has to be sort of limited to the, the record that occurs during the public hearing. So again, we can give that some thought once we get back to, once we get back to quote-unquote "normal," but certainly during the governor's emergency declaration, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, okay, okay. I'm a little concerned about if we decide to buy technology, I don't want it to be something that we're going to use for three months and then not need it anymore. So it would have to be something that could be ongoing and promote our goals of transparency and communication and outreach, but, you know, I wouldn't, I'm not interested in buying something, whatever it costs, that we'll use for two months and then, oh, we don't need this anymore. We don't have money for that.
No, agreed completely.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that's our, that's our long-term goal. We, we don't want to do anything that we can't use for a long time.
Good, 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 good. So, having said all of So, having said all of this, we need to, we need to come to agreement on how, and we can, we can do this a month at a time, we can do it two months at a time, but we need to have, you know, we have to come to agreement on how we're going to meet. That's why I brought this up. So is there a proposal for a month, two months, or go back, then start meeting in person? What do you, somebody make a proposal please?
Is this something that we could amend as, if we have more information in the future?
Sure, yeah, 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 yeah. We just have to have someplace to kind of move forward. And we could approve this, um, could we, we could probably do it a meeting at a time if we decided, or a month at a time. So we could say, we're going to decide at every meeting what we're going to do on our next meeting. We could do that if we wanted to be that precise, or by the month, or, yeah. Yeah, it's our rules, so we can change them.
I just wanted to jump in real quick and say, if we're doing any sort of decision-making for the zoning hearing board, that just due to the timeline of ads, it would be best if we knew at least a month ahead of time, whether we were virtual or not. But that's just for the zoning hearing.
No, that's, that's good, that's good input, that's good input.
I think that what Gavin brought up is worth taking into consideration. If the emergency declaration's been extended 90 more days, that puts us into September, right?
Right.
Seems so far away.
It does seem far away, it does.
I know it'll be here before we know it, but.
Are you proposing Angela for, for 90 days?
Well, I, I guess, I'm just wondering, what does it mean to, at this point, what does the emergency declaration mean anymore? We're still in the mitigation phase?
Right, I mean, you know, it's not to be confused with sort of the green, yellow, red situation. I mean, the, the emergency declaration sort of keeps in place a number of things, but most relevant to you is this Act 15, which allows for these modified meetings, these, you know, sort of additional written public comments, those kind of things. So, you know, it, if, if you feel it's appropriate, you're able to continue on this path during that declaration. Now, when his declaration ends, Act 15 essentially, I think all of it, but I don't have it in front of me, but the, at least the, the relevant portion for this discussion terminates. So you have to go back to, you know, the old way of doing things.
That's an important point too, because, you know, we're talking about doing this hybrid type of meeting, but we may not be allowed to do this once that declaration ends.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there may be instances where, you know, you can do it. It, it may not be, again, a one-size-fits-all thing. And the public hearings are a little bit more complicated than just your standard regular meeting and, and, you know, allowing public comment as you would at a regular meeting. We, we, you know, it, this whole thing is, is sort of dynamic, you know, everyone is trying to figure this out. So I, I would certainly understand that this council doesn't want to commit at this point that, you know, for the entire summer, we're going to do it, you know, one way, when it turns out that, you know, you may learn from trial and error from some of your other, these other municipalities nearby, someone, some people are going to, you know, run through some, you know, probably encounter some hiccups along the way, and we can, we can learn from those. So obviously, I don't have a vote, but to, to do this at least on a, you know, meeting-by-meeting basis, or at most, I wouldn't extend beyond a month, because there's so many things that can change in 30 days with the nature of the pandemic, the nature of how these meetings, you know, you know, might, might run. Some of the social distancing aspects, Bob made a great point. When if you have a, if you plan to start having in-person meetings, and then you have a really sort of controversial item or something that really becomes of interest to the public, you know, how do you cut off? You know, who gets to come in the town hall, and who has to come home and call in or find a monitor? It's, it's just, there's just not, you know, there's, there's no right or wrong answer at this point. I think we just, everyone has to stay a little bit flexible.
I'd, I'd make a suggestion that we do this through the end of July, initially to accommodate the advertising requirements with the zoning hearing board. And that's, it's a clean, it would be a clean decision at that point for us moving forward.
I would support that.
That's fine.
Carolyn?
I'm in support of going through July, yes.
Good, good, okay. I'm looking, I was looking for nods for the people I could see, okay? Okay, so, um, all right, so we will move forward and we'll continue to Zoom. Our meeting as well as all town meetings through July, okay? And we'll reevaluate in July and, so that we have enough time to do our advertisement to figure out what we want to do going forward. You like it Gavin?
I like it.
Okay, good, good, all right. All right, there is a C, not on here, but there, there's a C. And that is, we are working on a oil and gas or amendment to our update on our oil and gas ordinance. And it is long, it's complex, and it's going to take some creative, maybe some creative zoning, we're still trying to figure it all out. So it was suggested that we can wait and wait for this ordinance to come through and do all the things that it needs to do, which could be pretty lengthy. Or, and then we would be living by our old ordinance, which doesn't really have the safety items in it that I think the town needs. This new one has got a lot of really good safety items that are not part of our current ordinance. So we did before with the small cell tower, in what's currently in effect, was the pending ordinance doctrine. And if you recall that, and Gavin, if I do this wrong, please chime in, but, which would be, if we adopt this on the oil and gas, that means that there couldn't be any oil and gas moved forward right now until we adopted that ordinance. And of course, you can't abuse that right and take like 10 years to adopt an ordinance, because that would be like excluding the use, and, you know, we, we're not doing that. But what it would do is it would kind of hold our place so that if anyone wanted to come in and do any of that kind of development here, they would have to go by the new ordinance when it was put in place. Did I do that right Gavin?
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty close. I mean, to be clear, we, we can't put a moratorium on, on the actual oil and gas development. But there is, you know, the, the way it's normally done in McCannlis is that we would prepare a resolution, present that to town council, and we would attach as an exhibit the draft ordinance that's under consideration. And what that essentially does, it acts as a shield so that, you know, those folks who, let's say we, you know, we eliminate one of the districts in which this use is permitted in, in the draft. But it, so essentially, while that draft is sort of getting adopted or sort of working its way through the process, no one can come in and, and try to, you know, do that use, even if it's in our, you know, our codified ordinance, because we have a draft that would, a pending that's excluding that use. So as, as Ms. Zachary said, you know, it can't be abused, it's, you know, we have to, there has to be a good faith attempt or to, to move forward and, and get to the finish line essentially to adopt this ordinance. But it, it sort of just clarifies that it is in fact a draft ordinance that's under consideration by town council and sort of formalizes that, to put everyone on notice that this is under consideration. So it, it sort of, it's almost like a quick fix temporarily, putting in these regulations until we get a chance to formally adopt the ordinance. And just to be clear, you know, I don't know if everyone's had, how, if the draftment circulated to everyone, if you all had a chance to review it, you know, my suggestion would be, we, we may want to make a couple more tweaks. There were some good comments that came up at the planning commission meeting so that, you know, and I'm not sure what your timetable was, Madam President, but we could certainly, you know, get that in slightly better form to address those comments, prepare a resolution for the next meeting, and then attach that draft ordinance to that resolution to, to, you know, implement that pending ordinance doctrine, and then, you know, sort of keep that process moving towards adoption of a final ordinance.
So that is, that is, that's my idea. I like the shield analogy that Gavin gave. So I would, we, as he said, we would direct him and planning to get some things together, and then we could look at this, discuss it, perhaps vote on it at, in two weeks. What, what, what do you all think?
And let me add, before we get into discussion too deeply, that just as a general overview, and Madam President did a good job generally, but I wanted to add that currently, just from a 30,000-foot view, the use of property in the town of McCannlis for oil and gas development is currently permitted in the I institutional district and also the C2 neighborhood shopping district. So that the draft ordinance that we prepared removes the C2 as a permitted area where, where this activity can occur. And it also adds in quite a few health and safety regulations that are not, that are not currently existing. The old ordinance was, was drafted in 2010. There have been some improvements on these regulations. Some of your neighboring communities have adopted some of them, and we have, we have, you know, created some of our own, borrowed some from others that we thought were appropriate. So that's essentially what this draft does, is, is takes it out of the C2, leaves it in the I, and then adds a number of health and safety regulations. And, and what the discussion at the planning commission meeting was is, well, does it make sense to, to leave it in the I? Or do we want to potentially look at preparing an overlay district, looking at the town to see if maybe there's some sort of areas where it would be appropriate and less impactful that might not be clearly designated by a particular existing zoning district? So those were the discussions that obviously, you know, can continue to take place. But the draft as it exists right now is how I described it, taking it out of the C2 and leaving it in the I.
So the one question that I have about this is, if we, if we do the pending ordinance doctrine with that draft, and we decide we don't want it in I, let's say we want to decide we want it in C6, that, we can still make that change?
You can still make that change, you're, you're not locked in. However, you know, once you publicly determine that what's being considered and move forward under, under adoption is different than what you designate as your pending ordinance, obviously, you're not going to have that same, that same protection. You can only have, you know, you, that, you could probably follow that, but you can't just, once we, once we start moving in a different direction from the way this draft is set up, then you at least arguably lose that protection from a future application while those changes are taking place.
But we would still have all the safety things.
Right, right.
Yes, okay, right, right, right. So we would have more than we would have right now if we just wait.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Anyone's thoughts on this?
Madam President?
Yes?
So this is one thing that I've read in its entirety, and so I feel comfortable commenting. First of all, I just, I support utilizing the pending ordinance doctrine. I think it is a prudent interim step for where we are today. And one of those reasons is because it gives us some protection today, but helps us maybe not rush through something. This is a very complicated type of legislation. And I, I don't think we want to make any mistakes on it as a town. So I feel as if, if that would be helpful in keeping us, keeping the town safe, and also giving us some time to ensure that we're looking at all of the options, then I would be strongly in favor of it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, this is Trish Clunin, and I agree, I'd be in support of the pending ordinance doctrine as well. I think this has a big impact, especially because we not only have to consider McCannlis, but also state and federal laws as well, and how we are working with them. There's a lot to think about here, and I appreciate the idea of the pending ordinance doctrine.
Is there, is there anyone who objects to allowing our attorney to get it all together so we can look at it? You know, we can always reject it like this, we don't want this. We can say, we're not going to, we're not going to approve this, you know? This is, we're deciding to let him to put it all together so we can look at it and, and kind of encourage planning. And so then we can take a look at it and say if we want to do it or not. We're not voting to accept, I want to be clear, we're not voting to accept, we're not voting at all, we're just giving a nod for this. This is not to accept the pending ordinance. This is to direct our solicitor to assemble all of this, and then we'll look at it, and then that will be another whole vote, right? Gavin?
Correct, yeah, this will, this, it will be on the agenda as a resolution for next week, which doesn't require any advanced advertising. And again, all you're doing is signaling publicly your intent to adopt this draft ordinance, you know? But as we, as we discussed, it doesn't, it doesn't lock you in to absolutely, you know, the end product doesn't have to look exactly as, as what we're going to present at the next meeting.
If there's no one who objects, or if there's someone who objects, please speak up now. All right, Gavin, I think if you don't, if you get that together for us, we appreciate it.
Sure.
For what it's worth, I, I just want to point out, I think that this is a good move in that exploring some of the other options, like the overlay discussion, is definitely going to be a, it's going to be a significant informational lift. I mean, we can, we can do it, but it's good to have a little more time on the clock.
Great, thank you, okay. Is there any other new business?
Madam President, this is Joanne Powers.
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to say at this time, as of tonight, I am going to have to resign from council because I am relocating, and I will not be living in McCannlis. So I would like to thank everyone for their friendship and our cooperation in working together. But things are the way they are, and, and I need to relocate at this time. So I am turning in my resignation.
Thank you, Joanne. Of course, we're sorry to hear that, but we understand that life events take their course, and we have to adjust with those. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for understanding, I appreciate it. And I apologize for having to do it at this time before my term is up. But situations as they are, I kind of have to do what's best for my life. So that's why I'm doing this at this time.
Joanne, will you be sending in a written resignation? Okay, all right.
Yes, I will, I will send a letter into Bob.
Okay.
I'll do that, I'll do that within the next couple of days.
Okay, all right, that's great, because I think we do have to have it in, I think we have to have it in writing before we, we, we post that. So thank you so much, and we wish you good luck.
Thank you so much, I, I truly appreciate it, and I will miss everyone's company. I hope I won't lose all the friendships that I've had, but it's just, it's just something that needs to be done right at this time.
Yeah, all right.
Councilwoman Powers, thank you for your service and best wishes in your new home.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Is there any other new business?
I, this is Trish Clunin, and I just want to also say thank you to Councilwoman Powers for her many, many, many years involved in the McCannlis community. We, as our citizens here, really appreciate everything you've done, we wish you the best of luck.
Well, thank you, it's, this is the hardest thing I think I've ever done, because my husband and I truly, truly love McCannlis.
It shows.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to reconvene this meeting at 6:30 on June the 27th, 22nd, 2020, to conduct candidate interviews to fill vacant position, to finish interviews for the technology committee, and, and have an executive session for personnel?
So moved, Trish Clunin.
Okay, second?
Carolyn Schwager.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Aye, good night.
Stay safe.